All right, I would like to call this meeting of the Madison School District Board to order on this Monday, October 6th at 6:30 PM. Number two on our agenda, any changes or additions we need to make? All right, on to number three, approval of minutes from September 8th, 2025, and I will take a motion to approve those minutes. So I'm over.
Second.
All right, any discussion about those minutes? All right, hearing none, I will call a voice vote to approve those minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Aye. Megan.
Thanks, Megan. All right, no nays or abstentions, so those are approved. All right, moving on to number four, public comment on non-agenda items or announcements. Public comment is not legally required, but we believe it is crucial for us to hear from our community members about their concerns over issues. Through these meetings, our board models for our students how to conduct public discourse, and that the board and members of our community can approach controversial issues in a civil and constructive manner, and can demonstrate mutual respect. Having said that, please note, the board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed for discussion. Please start by identifying yourself and what town you reside in, and please limit your remarks to three minutes. So, any public comment or announcements?
Um, the redistricting, I have a hard time saying that word, the redistricting task force that is charged with creating new districts of 4,000 to 8,000 students is meeting this Friday at Oxbow High School in Bradford. They're meeting from 9:30 to 3:30 for their regular meeting. They have been doing six-hour-long meetings, but from 4:30 to 6:30, they're having a public comment session. And you can go in person to Oxbow High School, or they also are, there will be an online option as well, if you're interested in in giving input into how this process is, or what you'd like to see, or any of those things.
All right, thank you, Elizabeth. And I saw that you emailed that earlier, too. Is that, did you send that to Frontboard Forum listeners?
I did, I sent out a thing, but at the time that I sent it, they didn't have a time for the public comment.
Okay.
And now, they have a time for it.
Excellent. All right.
Just a announcement, the winter was very much, woods are hot, was very much in view during the moon dance, and running several things. Or it was senior projects.
Yep.
Did very well up the dunk tank. Always a splash.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I had a couple comments in mind that actually touch on both of those things, so, yeah, I was so glad to see so many of our students out, and our school community out for autumn moon fest, running booths, just having a good time. Also, I got to, you know, check out our sports games, saw the varsity girls soccer have a great game, and boys varsity football, doing their best. You know, it's good to see them just getting out and playing while we have this nice warm weather for a couple more days. But, yeah, really great homecoming and autumn weekend, so great to see so much of our community out there, getting together and do some positive stuff. I also just wanted to quickly have a little bit of a public comment on the Act 73 stuff, just some follow-up on some things that I've kind of heard swirling about, really before that coverage in the Valley News came out. I thought that was pretty, yep, I thought it was fairly accurate in reflecting that, you know, this is something that the art supervisory union and our two neighboring supervisory unions in Hartford, Hartford's district, and the kind of SUST Mountain Views, I think it's called a supervisory union, but yes. It is intent, that really is meant to steer a process that if we did nothing, the choice might be made for us, and we are trying to, as those three units, express some agency that we already share some resources and it makes sense to work together. The one thing that I think has been a little bit confusing for folks, and I was hearing some of this beforehand as well, is that, I think visually, when you look at the online article, it has the picture of the proposed new Woodstock High School. The new Woodstock High School expansion is something that's being discussed in Woodstock. That is not part of the proposed merger idea that we're talking about. There is not any plan to send students from this town to a larger Woodstock High School.
Or discussion.
Or discussion, yeah. It's, it's not in the mix right now, so I just want to make that really clear, like, those two things were presented together in that article, but they're, they're not really related. So I just want to just clear the air on that. But otherwise, I think that, you know, the coverage of how that discussion went about the proposed merger was pretty accurate, including some of the misgivings about Act 73, which are shared by a lot of us. Any other announcements, public comment? All right, well, hearing none, we will move on to our administrative report. Turn it over to Christine.
Can you present? So I can look here?
I'm just glad that you're.
We have a link in.
Yeah. Yeah. So I have Caspian with me. Do you want me to tell them who you are, or do you?
I can.
A fourth grader in our school, and I asked Caspian to join me today. We have just started talking about our student leadership team, and how we're going to form that this year, and we haven't been too far down the process, other than students have applied. So I don't have a team to bring to, but I am 100% confident Caspian is one of our student leadership team members. He displays an incredible amount of leadership in our school. And so, today, we practiced in the hallway this presentation we're going to give, and he's going to jump in, and his mom pulled him aside, and so thank you for doing that. Can we get one more? So I think one of the biggest goals for the elementary school this year was, under the stronger together that we're using in NSU, was to really think about communication involvement and opportunities for families to participate in our day. I think I noticed last year, there's a real difference between what I see and feel inside the building, and what some people might hear and think outside the building. So we made this a goal to really, not just promote the activities, but make people feel like they should be in our building, and come see what we see and what we're doing every day. And this just lists a few of the ways that we do things, none of these seem incredibly new, but maybe we're all doing, we're doing it a little bit differently. So we will have conferences. We're still working on our family engagement opportunities. We haven't scheduled those, but we're trying to think about not just having them as evening summers that don't always work for people, maybe it's books and bagels, or something in the morning that we look at the beginning of the day, and the middle of the day, and the end of the day, to make the building accessible to a lot of our families. I think the behavior understanding and the engagement and the work that we did with Behavior Matrix, I know, is understood by our families, and it's really increasing our communication. And Caspian and I were talking about it a little bit today, and what did you have to say about our understanding of behavior in school?
Um, that there should be, like, just, not just for the kids, but also for the teachers, that there should be more expectations, just, not just, like, not to be like a pain to, like, your kids, but like, just to help, because I have seen some teachers not appropriately dealing with problems with kids. So I just think that there should be higher expectations for teachers and kids' life.
And we talked about an understanding, right, like, training, how do we deal with these situations when they come up, and knowing that we have people that need support around that. We also, Caspian also noticed that it feels different in school this year, with just that common understanding, phenomenal SEI room running right now with some really highly skilled people that are making a difference in the way it feels like it felt. We also are looking for some volunteer opportunities, trying to create some welcomeness in some ways, and we'll share those with you. We have a lot of communication staff, families, administration to families, guidance to families, and in return, their communication back, which I think has improved a lot, has increased a lot. We're looking at some cross-grade school opportunities, like middle school to elementary school, but also some of the student leadership things of kind of fourth and fifth graders being helpful to our kindergarten and first graders. And Caspian even thought about, what, were you talking about lunch duty? What were you talking about today, that the older kids could?
Oh, yeah.
Right, maybe helping in the cafeteria, and having lunch with kids, and showing them what it would be like to have lunch. And then, our student leadership team, which we're still trying to form, we'll talk about that in a minute. Can go one more, Christine.
Go one more.
So just, whoops, sorry, go back one, you went ahead and I didn't. The ways that we have tried to engage more people already this year, our kindergarten always often offers an extra kind of open house, trying to give our five-year-olds an extra opportunity to feel comfortable in the building. They do do their half-days, as well as participate in our open house. Pre-K does that as well, they have extended open house times to let families come in and get familiar with the space. During our meet the teacher night, we had, you know, I think one of the things I appreciate the most is we had 100% staff involvement, which is just fantastic. That was a different feeling last year. And 75% of the families were engaged in coming and meeting, and we kind of sent them around the school, not just come over to the one classroom, but go see the other, go see the music room. And then we're still working on our community engagement. And then, we can go one more. So this is something new that we've started. Can you, do you want to talk about this one?
Sure. So it's shout-outs for kids, so like, when a teacher or another kid sees that somebody who's doing something good, then, or like, nice for somebody else, then they can, like, tell, like, Ms. Thompson or somebody else, and we're doing shout-outs over the morning meeting, just make kids feel good about themselves, and make them feel like they actually matter in what they do.
And so, we have a virtual morning meeting every morning, which doesn't sound very exciting, but it's actually very fun. We play games, we have trivia contests, we play bingo, we do scavenger hunts for things around the school, where the kids have to go find things and collect as many as they can, like, work with their class, and then just give them the little bits of information. The shout-outs was something that came out of the summer work from Leader and me, with how do we, how do we recognize the exceptional behavior, not the expected behavior, right? Like, that's what we should be expecting, what's the exceptional behavior? Today, I told Caspian, I thought he was the first person to receive a shout-out, and he corrected me, he told me he was never the lead. He was not the first. The part that I think is the most important almost about this, is not just making the students feel good about what they did, but we send emails to families that their child has been shouted out, so, and every single email that I've sent out, I have had a reply on from a parent in a positive way, so it's just, again, just trying to open up that communication. Teachers just fill out a form, right, and it goes in there, and they tell me why they're shouting it out, and then I add them to my morning replies, and it's, but I think kids want shout-outs, so, yeah, okay. Leadership assemblies, so these, we revamped these a little bit, right, from last year. You okay to talk about that?
Sure. So we moved it to the theater, so just, so it's nicer. We made it more personalized awards without the category, just to make it, like, pointed more towards, like, what exceptional thing they actually, like, did, instead of categorizing them. And we're doing more student class presentations, and there was an invitation to all families and community members, and we're gonna start doing coffee for the people who come in the morning. And the student leadership team will eventually, like, do, like, lead the leadership assemblies.
And, and the hope is that they eventually take it over, right? Like, we were talking earlier about, you know, I open and close, and the kids will read the awards, but could we ever get to a place where students could really just take this over? And, and some of the morning meetings, can we get their voices out more? We're still working on that, too. And then, okay, Caspian, I didn't do my homework, I was supposed to put another, ignore the three stars. So, it was the end of September that we started thinking about the student leadership team. The previous year, I think, selection, and at that time, it was election, into the student leadership team had some bumps in it. And we were trying to think of a way to involve everybody, but also make it, make it something you earn, make it something you work for that fits you. So we refocused it a little bit, but this was, we, we'll look at that, that's what we did, in that month of September.
All right. And there are 38 students trying out for it, and it's grade three through five, some landed on both.
September included applications, I haven't compiled that yet.
And the part, and.
So we had, we had requirements for, some of the students took themselves out immediately when we started talking about what it meant to be on the student leadership team, some of them literally, at 38, literally left the meeting, which, okay. And then, we outlined for families, so the letter on the right is what went home for families, and outlining some of the requirements, the characteristics qualities that we thought. So students had to go home and talk with their parents about this, and both had to sign it and return it, and we were really strict on deadlines. And, and sure, that is a responsibility, right, when you're applying for a position or a job, it's a responsibility, you can't apply two days late and have this thing. We did have some families that wanted to email in permission, and I said, this is a responsibility, right, like, we're really asking for, we will need help from families for evening events and things like that. So what I haven't compiled, or what the blank missing numbers, how many filled out the application, and how they were figuring out it in on time. So we wrote subcommittees, because last year, at the beginning of the year, I'm not sure how many people were actually on our student leadership team at the beginning of the year. I know at the end of the year, it was four. They didn't have a regular meeting schedule. They had a lot of great ideas, and I think they gave you a great video last year about the three fifth graders who were left and did a great job for us. So I'm a little afraid we're gonna have too many kids. So we talked about subcommittees, could third graders kind of work their way into some of the bigger leadership roles that the fourth and fifth graders might have, and do they want to have subcommittee work around the school? I still think other kids will filter themselves off, they had to, they realized their meetings will be at lunchtime, right, so they would have to agree to come to lunch, and we'd make announcements, but again, really pushing that responsibility piece up, it's your job to know that you're coming, right, if you're gonna be our leadership, we'll give you some reminders, but not all. No? All right. We, this is a lot of fun, back to looking, thinking about ways that we can connect with the community. Last year, after Harvest Moon Festival, James from the rec reached out to Kate and said, we'd love to find a way to get the kids more involved, and Kate said, what do you think? And I said, it sounds great. So a week ago, Monday night, Kate called me late and said, do you remember when we said, we get involved? I said, oh, yeah, I remember, we haven't talked about it. She said, we're, well, they're delivering 200 pumpkins tomorrow morning. Yeah, they were, but we had fun with it, right? So tell us what we did.
So we painted them, and Monday, we delivered them, Thursday, Friday?
Friday morning, they came and got them, right?
Yeah, Friday morning, the rec center came to get them, and they were displayed at the Harvest Moon Festival, so, and that was grades K through five, and there were a lot of pumpkins.
There were a lot of them. We, we spun a wheel during morning meeting to see who could come first, because of course, they all want to pick their pumpkins first, and so they lotteryed who had to come down, and the only rule was, especially for kindergartners, which you gotta be able to carry a pumpkin by yourself, right, so, so that left them with the big ones for the older kids. But yours is in here, which one's yours?
The one, it was very back.
The yellow one, way in the back. When we were going over this this morning, you said his pumpkin was in the, is in the first.
This one?
So, right, go to the left a little, I'm trying, my cursor's not. The other side, just length of center, right there.
Nice.
That's Caspian's. So that was a really fun community event. We, the teachers already talked about next year, I give them a lot of credit for just embracing the unexpected when I said there's 200 pumpkins in the office. All of the teachers were very on board and excited, and I think they have even more ideas for next year, so we'll be interested in that. And then, last Friday, we had our mountain day, I think. Which, the reason I put this in is not really as an event, but to let you know that we had 50-plus parents, grandparents, community members that came with us. So about a third, third as many as students. And where did you go?
We went on Mount Cardigan.
Fourth grade went to Cardigan, fifth grade goes to Ball in Rutland. A kindergarten, first grade to Mount Egg, and second, third grade to Mount Tong. And it's just a very, it's just a great day, and it couldn't have been more perfect, honestly, with the weather and. And I guess, when I think about this, what I appreciate the most is, we've done that, it's October 6th, that's what we've done to engage the community already this year, so not only are we working hard at it, we're having a lot of fun doing it.
Great job!
Just want to throw out two, Caspian, I really like that you highlighted right off the bat how important it is for our students and our staff and our administrators to be learning together, especially when we make big changes like the Behavior Matrix, because it's, you know, it's change and it's adjustment, and it takes people some time, but I think that was a really astute observation on your part, that, you know, we all, we all gotta work on this together, but I'm glad to hear that it's already making some positive change.
All right. I just talked about middle school and high school, I don't want to ask you to help me with this. Sorry, I'm just gonna jump on that, so I can see it closely. Colleen is celebrating. My birthday tonight, so I said I could speak at a school. So these are pictures that Colleen shared, and I think Jen, you heard about Farm and Wilderness, right, so that's on there. September Students of the Month is, the awards are continuing, and you can see those students there. Also, something they're adding in is Advisory of the Month, trying to get that, building that group of advisory students, getting them to work together, and being nominated to receive Advisory of the Month awards and celebrations. A lot of learning took place between Farm and Wilderness and back at school, so there's water testing that took place there, it's also brought back to school, and some water testing and comparisons were done here. Colleen has started shout-outs, she is doing them in the hallway on the television, the students' television, so the staff, I don't know how she collects her information, but when students are seen, again, being, showing exceptional behavior, they're recognized on that kind of marketing television that's in the middle of the hallway. And then, there's continuing work with bullying and education around that with students, and it's happening during their health classes, as well as, I know, Colleen has been having advisory meetings in here every other week, just to keep that conversation alive, and not let it go too far away. And then, the shout-outs that Destiny New Lawyer had, those were the ones that she was shouting at, I think those were the ones that came on the TV screen. Good to hear me again.
She said the whole script for you.
She did send me a whole script, I just have to find it.
Kate is sick. She's sick this weekend, I'll meet her to the event she needed to be at, and I should stay at home, so.
The Choice Matters Program, presented in partnership with the Vermont Agency of Transportation, and it's highlighting its commitment to use safety in the state. The core message is to educate students on the impact of, like, changing decisions related to driving, including the importance of driving sober, staying focused, and wearing seat belts. And then, homecoming, Kate is giving a huge shout-out to Katie Rainey, she's the leader of the Culture Action Team, and she planned an amazing homecoming weekend for the kids. She had to pivot from the bonfire to organize a, an enormous game of manhunt, which, Kate didn't write this part down, but I'll tell you anyway. Kate, at first thought this was not a good idea, and Katie really felt like she could put some parameters in place that would make it work, and she did, and she did a fantastic job. And then, they set up almost like a drive-in theater, and she calls me, was this Thursday, this was Thursday night, she called me Thursday night and said, I'm sitting in a field watching Jumanji with a whole bunch of high school kids. But they had 100 students participate, a lot of fun, everybody showed up with positive energy. And then, the pep rally on Friday, those prizes for staff trivia, some of that, I don't know who got high in the face, I don't know who did that. And on Saturday, we have the homecoming dance, a little over 150 students. And then Sending Students Day, this year, they're hosting Sending Students Day on November 7th. Eighth graders are invited to engage, for to engaging an interactive morning, being planned by the Cultural Action Team in school. It's been busy, too. And I think I went to high school before, and you got to talk about Farm and Wilderness, or are you gonna do that in New York?
I can do that now.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, so Farm and Wilderness, just bridging the two communities together, sixth graders from Auburn Bridge get to go over and enjoy and connect with the sixth graders from Point Zero at Farm and Wilderness, and then some of the eighth graders do a two-day thing there, basically. I've done this, and now this is probably the year I may be doing this with a crew, and we're getting pretty good at the date thing, I think, which is really nice. I think the things that the students learn during the day, particularly in the seventh and eighth grade, is really pretty fascinating, the things that they study, the way that the teachers put together lessons that are super engaging, and we can act like, they mentioned the, right, the science testing, so they're testing the waters there, they're testing the waters globally, and they're comparing the same, which is healthier, and why? And so there's no right or wrong answers, just what is healthier for. Some really good, kind of open-ended, experiential things that happen at Farm and Wilderness, it's always a challenge overnight, seventh and eighth graders overnight, it's hard, and I have yet to feel like we get through it completely successfully. So I think that's something worth thinking about, how do we make the learning experience real meaningful, and at the same time, how do we make it so manageable? So I think that's a challenge, something that probably will be solved. So, continuing on with Auburn Bridge School specifically, Exploratory, which is sort of a chunk of time that we have kids practice voice and choice around, particularly arts and social-emotional stuff, is often a really good start. We do short rotations where kids get to choose an art, a music, or a dance, or theater, something in the, right, and performance arts, or a social-emotional thing, which right now is focused around sports and sports and conduct. And kids get to choose, and they rotate. And kids get to choose and they rotate, um, the younger kids get a choice of every three ways. And the older kids get three choices over a period of time. So we're practicing that. So it's really exciting to see kids, um, starting to explore what they really want and hang in there when it gets tough, which is what we talk about when we think about autonomy and self-determined, um, learning. It's like, when you really engage in something, even when it gets hard, you stick with it. And therefore you learn the discipline of sticking with something when it's not easy. So it's really exciting to see those in action. Uh, at the same time, it's a lot of organization and also creates some, creates some unpredictability for kids who are not used to having to make choices on their own. So it's a really interesting kind of, um, balance of those two things. When some of their life stuff, like, I don't know what to do, or I don't want to make the right, wrong choice. Um, and then helping them like, hey, you can try this and now try that. Um, so it's a really kind of a nice opportunity there. We have, um, so I want to follow up with some of the maintenance stuff that we talked about during the last meeting. Um, so Jeb and I were able to connect about a couple of things, particularly around the, um, it all shifts gardens, should be in a different spot, around the gardens and the lands around the Alfred School. So we know the building is the school's responsibility. The land is technically the town's, but it's always been school budget, just sort of being team with the long stuff. So where we are right now is the tradition of the lands that are surrounding all the schools are maintained through like basic maintenance. Um, and we're on schedule to do that, so we're gonna update the field and get some more stuff going on there. The flower gardens, however, around the school were done by a volunteer, a community member a long time ago. It's part of their master gardening, um, apprenticeship, as I understand it. It's a lot of work and it's not something that our maintenance team does. So I've been in contact with, connecting with our town manager around, do we create a community option here? How can we support these beautiful flowers that are, they're a pollinator, a butterfly garden specifically designed by somebody who curated them, but is no longer able to maintain them? So in the past, since I've been here, I've had family volunteers essentially come in and help do the work every summer. Um, and into the fall, we're losing that capacity and you can tell by how the, how the grounds look. So it's not in any of the other school budgets, so it doesn't make sense that it would be in the school budget. So we're, we're with the town to think about how we can problem solve this as a community. So it's a great opportunity for us to explore that. And at this point, where we are is regarding the gardens, they're gonna cut it back, right? And there's three options that are available, um, that we can see as easy options. One is just put grass and get rid of all the flowers, basically, because then it's easy to maintain. Another might be some version of, um, a community volunteer program. We also know small communities have a lot of people who are so overworked and overcommitted and over-volunteering already. We don't know if that's sustainable or something in between. So we're going to spend kind of the winter meeting and trying to create some kind of plan that we can propose when the gardens start growing again in the spring. So that's our current plan for the flower gardens. Um, regarding the playground, I want to follow up with that one too. So, um, after that, we did, um, working into and clarifying expectations. So we posted signs based on our biz, that our insurance, pop names, expectations. Communicated, we put lots on stuff. We've also communicated with our, um, parents that since, like, it's, it's pretty clearly labeled what you should and should not do. Um, at that point last, um, I did know about this situation because it just happened. And I thought it may be a BTG, our after-school program, concerned. It wasn't a BTG thing, um, it was really just the parents, um, kind of following, right, upon parental things, after-school hours on town property, which is at that point happening. So it's a little murky because it's not really a school thing and yet they're using school supplies. So we want that, some school supplies. But we also don't want to create a sense of it's a school thing and you don't need to have anything to do with it. So we're creating, we have a community, um, kind of bin also, that we're putting like extra stuff in for community because we don't want them to be without. Um, so it's trying to kind of balance the need for security and having the resources that we expect as well as supporting a sense of openness to community. So that's where we are with that. Um, so all the rounds will just happen this weekend. We had great, um, representation from our parent community, our skateboarding safety, and also often people that are also like our parents, Jordans, as you can see. Um, we had kind of a little joke playing with a brass with a cat that showed us. You can see that picture up there, left corner. Um, Finding Our Stride is one of our athletic opportunities. I know they do that here in Winter Two. It's really hard. And less than two, find an adult who can come out and do some work, um, for any kind of sports after school. Because we have that gap of two thirty to three fifteen where we can't really have somebody volunteer who's a teacher. And so it's kind of murky, but we do have, um, our Finding Our Stride, which is really successful this year and it's super fun. On the, just off to the pink side of our Finding Our Stride group is our sixth graders taking out the trash again. Now we are in our third week of not having a custodian. They go about business every day, making our trash. So our sixth graders are cleaning our school for us. Um, and I, I know it is hard to find people. And I know that our school knows how to step up, whether it's our students, our staff, or our students. We always step up and make it happen. I just want to shout out that our sixth graders do that work. They're, they're cleaning the school for us to an extent. That's appropriate for them. I'm so huge, huge, huge shout out there. Um, our compost, I just, uh, we have been able to get a grant and build that beautiful compost area outside of the school through a grant, um, within the state. And we're saving a lot. We're saving a lot in terms of, um, CO2. We're saving a lot in terms of, uh, that's a lot, but some, one living account, lots to handle. We're talking about not having somebody come pick up our compost first. And the students are learning a lot about how to navigate in a world that none of us, probably, most of us, did not grow up understanding how to take care of our own waste. So it's a pretty cool thing. I just want to give a huge shout out to the community to, um, be stepping up and doing that work. So next one, HHP presentations and the, uh, behavior expectations. Last week, uh, last week? There is two weeks ago. It's two weeks ago. I hadn't planned to present. Um, and, and parents have been knowing about that for a month. Unfortunately, I was like, not okay to show up. Um, I was pretty ill. So I put together the two options for the next two Wednesdays and then one during the school day, um, on the twentieth, for our parents to come here and then to get feedback. I'm also going to work with our, uh, S U to put together a presentation that goes out for everybody. Because I think it's important that we have the same shared message and that, that I can pull people's expertise to help create a video presentation. So it's kind of a universal thing. So that's our next goals for that. Um, MOU, so memorandum of understanding regarding the land. Our town hall, um, our town manager is working with their attorney person who is going to create an MOU. It sounds like, I mean, before I came here, I'm not even sure there was one, that we can find one, as far as I can understand. And then when we merged, it doesn't look like there was one specifically created for the land because it is the town land. But when school concessions, it's the school, so whose responsibility is that? It's kind of a little bit of that, let's figure it out. So they're working on that. Um, Open House was a great success, I heard. Because I was going to do the presentation on that same day and I could not show up. I'm so bummed. Um, but I heard it was a great success. People had wonderful conversations. Parents had been able to connect with each other and teachers. And then our student leadership team is, um, we had students present, like, why they think they should be in certain leadership roles. Um, and it's super cute in, in a way. And yet you watch these kids grow up and muster all this courage to stand for their peers and say, I believe I can help us move forward. And it's such an awe-inspiring moment. And I had one of the students who, I have to tell this personal story, who, um, wants to be a leader, um, in our school. And I wasn't sure what that meant for this student because they're kind of a quiet, reserved person. But then I, I teach lessons, so Fridays is my teaching day. I teach all day on Fridays. And so I taught, um, a trumpet lesson. He's been in my trumpet group for a year. We had a brand new person join the trumpet group. And I also had a horn player, because I didn't do it like so much. So I was doing brass all together. So I was working with the horn player while I said, can you just let him know how to take the instrument out and put it together? And give him the basics of some stuff. And so the student shared with the other kid, the new kid. And within ten minutes, this kid was playing hot cross buns. And I'm like, it takes me weeks to do that. And the amazing thing was, as I'm sitting there and I'm working with this other student, I was, yeah, that's it, you got it. We forget that sometimes. We get so inundated with just trying to like get to the next thing, which we forget to celebrate the successes. And that was just one of those moments that's like, oh yeah, oh yeah, that is why we do it. And that also reminds me, like, you don't always see the introverts shining, but when they have that moment, there they are too. So I'm super excited about both of those opportunities. And now I get to talk a little bit about our, um, kind of where we are with our behavior expectations and HHP presentations. So our goal was by the end of September, um, we shared it with staff and both buildings have completely done that. Um, so then the trainer that we've worked with our MBAs, we've all kind of worked as a team to make sense of how to do it within our new system. Um, within the, um, Windsor side, which also invited the West Windsor community. They shared out on the information, which was, I believe, was September third, if I recall correctly. Um, so that was shared out. We had some of our parents there. Um, and that's the one that I'm post-calling until, uh, next week and the week after and the week after. Um, and we are working on some cultural survey? So, I was given to staff. Yes, we did it to the staff, did it for the staff. Um, did it for the staff. On, and then we got our students, our, have all been, um, given at least an initial. And some have had multiple renditions of what the expectations are as well as what HHP does. So that's where we are, um, in that process. And then if you go to the next one, we want to share a little bit about what our MVAOs, which is, um, measurable, whole, behavior. So it's our powerful version of what our behaviors are. So this is kind of one of the first, like, when a teacher goes in, or administrator, I think this must be administrator. Um, goes in, so we, we put in who we are, what it was. Um, you identify based on that behavior matrix that all parents now have access to, whether it falls in the major or minor category. And then from there, they get to select what they think the, um, key area of violation is that we're talking about. And there's quite a, quite a range, but they all show up in our behavior matrix. So whatever our behavior matrix is, yeah. So you have, uh, the ones on the top are numbered and the ones on the bottom have, um,
The M is major.
Major, okay.
Yeah, and I think that's one of the cleaning up things that we've noticed, like when teachers, how important it is if they click the right one. Like, if you click the major or you click the minor. So that's something we've had to clean up a little bit of staff.
Yes. So out of bounds is off-school property. That's always a major example. There's no minor version of off-school property. So, yeah, thank you.
And the majors that are always handled by school administration.
Yes. Uh, and then the next you're gonna talk a little bit about some of the more detailed components of it. So you might talk about, um, was the student that you're putting in, either the person who maybe did the unhelpful action, the person who maybe was the receiver of the unhelpful action, or they're a witness. Then you get to add some more in, information there. And then we talk about things like on that slide, that if you look down, so where it happened, date. These are all good basic information. We're talking about gathering data.
Um, those all drop down and they can be selected. I just can't take a picture of it.
So you may have noticed, for example, like a kid really often has, um, something that happens around ten o'clock every day. And then you can have a conversation like, oh wow, I wonder if that's something having to do with their, you know, blood sugar or their, right? Something about them as, as something that's not just about their behaviors, about something else going on for them. Um, and then our motivation, we talk about, um, I know that's not pulled down, but what we think might be the reason. Are they trying to communicate something? Are they trying to get something, right? Those are the typical, uh, they call ABA, um, and C, behavior consequence. Um, what's their basic motivation? And we know that basic motivation is much more complex than basic motivation. Right? We don't have that motivation, either trying to get something you want or get out of something you don't want. And we also know that it goes way deeper than that. Like, if you're trying to get out something you want, you don't want to do, and you have skills to do that successfully, then you can navigate that okay, right? If you're trying to get something that you want and you don't have to do that with skills, you can do that successfully and it doesn't show up on these things. It's when you have that gap of, you're trying to get it, but you don't have all the skills to get it. That helps us identify, are you dealing with some kind of frustration tolerance, problem-solving skills, communication skills, right? There's a whole host of skills that get in the way of us being able to accomplish that. So that's where we get to dig a little deeper, which then leaves us to some version of possibly looking at like, um, our learning skills in Detroit. All right, so on to slide ten. Not that I can see it from there.
Yeah, I think this is.
All right, so then you talk about in the next, the teachers or the administrators get to put out what we think might be, uh, like, so where it happened, but then we also talked about who's involved. You can talk about who the staff members, because you might find you have some staff members who are really good at communicating. Those staff members who never seem to communicate. And that helps us as, um, kind of a team figure out why we're communicating, what, when. Um, it also helps us figure out where we want to focus our attention in terms of a problem solver. Okay, and then are you on slide eleven? You want that? Yes. Yeah, you're on slide eleven. Okay, so then on slide eleven, the teachers get to choose, um, what it is that they did. So we talk about logical consequences. If you break it, you fix it. If you need a break, take a break. Um, if you lose privileges for a moment, while you show you can handle it, you lose privileges. Um, there's other things also such as ritual practices, you can make repairs, um, whether we contact the parents, that kind of stuff. So that all goes in there. And then the administrators take what we call disciplinary action if we need to, if it gets to that level, and then we mark it up. And that is what our ABA looks like at a big picture level for public-facing information.
Thank you. I really appreciate that.
You know, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, before I start, you are welcome to stay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Did a great job.
Thank you. Thank you, Caspian. Thank you, and thanks, thank you.
All right, just a few things to share tonight. Um, that, uh, I sent you all, uh, a form to fill out on the district, uh, quality standards for governance. Did you all receive that? Okay, just wanna make sure. Not I can resend it. We're looking, um, we have to score our rubrics. They are just self-valuable, valuable this year. Um, but we, Larry and I, um, felt strongly that the board should definitely weigh in on the governance pieces because that's the part you're really involved in. So, uh, we don't have to submit until November, so you have plenty of time. And I'll remind you, but I just want to let you know that those, those were sent out. Um, we have just about completed our fall assessments. So Fall, STAR, and Dibbles were administered this month, well, end of September. Uh, at the end of this week, on our early release day, uh, Thursday afternoon, our staff are gonna engage in, in data banks, which we've been doing for a couple of years now. They're getting really good at it and those will be led by being structural team leaders with the help of some interventionist or team leaders. Um, so each grade level will be digging in to their data and will help them set classroom goals and student individual goals. Um, and then Bridget will come back to the S U meeting later this month and she will, um, share out the S U data with you. Yes.
Is there, does anything that's on to the parents who have students significantly above the benchmark?
Yeah, so significantly below. So significantly below is Act one thirty-nine.
Right.
Student needs to go out within thirty days of the screening. Those were mailed out, I believe, on. Those were mailed out, I believe, on Friday to all the schools.
DIBELS assessment.
Did Dan plus DIBELS assessment. Um, that's what we use for our reading screener. Uh, the rest of the material will be passed out at parent conferences. Um, if parents do not come to conferences, they'll be mailed.
We are printing this year, a parent report through Edge Climber, which we haven't done before. It's a really easy to read report, which gives you information on your, um, assessments, STAR and or DIBELS. Your, even your, I think your classroom, classroom grading, just generally, your attendance. It also will run ma- major behaviors. So it's all in one document. It can be, um, printed right through Edge Climber and we're going to do it three times a year. So you know, we don't print report cards, but this is, we'll give parents some information, which I think people have been asking for. So yeah, so we're going to try. Give us your feedback once you get the report. Okay. So what is it beside, does it trigger anything else besides a letter home if yours?
Well, yeah, definitely. So already nine groups around the schools have been formed, which are intervention groups. So there's, there's, there's what we call tier two and tier three. So on the tier two, within working with the classroom teachers, separate than the direct instruction time, the students are divided up based on need and based on the, the results, both of DIBELS and also STAR. Um, and those groups are flexible. So with, um, additional assessments, kids are going to move in or out of different groups. But we also have tier three intervention, which is a smaller group, more intensive things. And that's also part of Act 139 requirement. So and progress monitoring, just so you know, actually, action happens through Edge Climber also. So goals are set for each group of students or individual students. And then our intervention is working with classroom teachers, will progress monitor every two weeks or whatever's appropriate.
So you can tell if they just had a bad day.
Yeah, I think if we find out that a student's had a bad day per se, it means that the scores are not in agreement with any observable behaviors or performance in classrooms and or different assessments. Sometimes we have, we reset the STAR and run it again. But we can use STAR anytime during the year. We set the, the dates and that's aggregated so that when we share out data, it's included. But in two weeks, we can give STAR again as a progress monitoring tool and then we'll pretty quickly know if something's amiss.
Yeah. So I remember, I'm thinking about that one year at Albert Bridge when they said it was like, uh, a cruise ship when all parents and all families were sick. And, I mean, everybody was sick and, uh, and it really affected that everybody's scores. Cause the, the regular teachers weren't in the classroom. There were lots of people missing. So it was like a, you know, not the best way to take a test.
There is a 24 hour reset of the test though.
Yeah.
So if you give the student, no student who does point and click, you see that and you're like, no.
Try again.
Let's, let's do that again. And you have 24 hours and it replaces the score.
Yeah.
Okay.
And a teacher also is like, can look at those scores and be like, uh, something went wrong, right? That doesn't make sense.
And we reset it. There was a football.
They finish in five minutes.
So yes.
That is what I was wondering.
Yeah. Uh, all right, just a little, we just, redistrict, it is a hard word to say, Elizabeth, redistricting task force. They met on the 29th, uh, which was last week. There was a presentation on BOSI's. Um, the secretary did a little data dashboard overview. Um, I think that will, I think she's coming back to do more data, um, data work with the, with the team. They, they really need the data to do their job. So that's, seems to be a little contention.
We know the data that's wrong.
Yes.
She's going to present that again.
Yeah.
All the data that's wrong.
Yeah, it's, it's interesting. Uh, I did watch a little bit of it, um, after the fact and, yeah. There's some data that's not accurate, it seems, and some data that they need that they, that are, they're not able to produce. So, um, we'll see what happens. So for example, they wanted to, they, they wanted to think about making, uh, one of the maps based on BOSI's clusters. And, and what they really wanted to do was have it be BOSI's clusters and, um, to, to have part of every district, um, be mapped to the designated agencies that are providing other services. And, uh, which is
So on the HCRS.
Yeah. So it was kind of a dream for people who were at designated agencies to be mapped with the school system, but, uh, so they, they asked to have data about use of DA's and, and, uh, and to what degree, uh, at, you know, school populations and also at the DA's. And they weren't able to come up with any of the data. And which is unfortunate on several levels, but as you probably know, and probably everybody here knows, one of the big reasons that we have such high per pupil spending in our state is because we provide services through our education fund. Um, and almost every other state in the country, uh, provides those outside of their education spending.
Mental health services.
Mental health services. Yeah. So it would, it would be great all the way around if we were able to quantify that. And it's unfortunate that, uh, that that didn't happen. But the other thing they talked about, the biggest other presentation was on, um, a map of, uh, career and technical education. Which was released, the draft map. That was released and they, they, uh, were asked about what would happen in the southwest corner of the state where there is no career and technical education. They said, let us get back to you. Yeah. So they're meeting, they have four more meetings before they are, um, their charge is due December 1st. So we'll see in front of the gap. Um, and as Elizabeth said, there, there's a public, um, engagement session that evening on the 10th. So hopefully people can at least log in. I, I do want you to know part of Act 73 is class size minimums. And Larry and I have been working for the past month on, um, on class size minimums to see where we're at. And we're not done with that work yet. We're starting to meet with the principals. Uh, we, we will bring forward a plan with, um, during budget season, budget process with, with that information for you. So, um, we're going to be okay in some places and not in others. So creating a plan for that. Um, quarterly financials are in the portal. I will pull them up for you here if I can get to the right screen. So it's early, it's the first quarter. Um, you see on the revenue page are, um, there's a budget variance, which is not to be concerned about because the anticipated revenue in the budget. So Larry said not to worry about that. Um, expenditures on the next, um, page, on page two. And we're doing, you know, fine with expenditures. I'm sorry, can, just going back for a second to class size minimums.
Um, sure.
They, they don't take a pick right away if they're not in the pick for next year, are they?
They are.
For the next, for the FY '27, the budget here.
Yep.
They are. Which is why we're frantically doing the work, because it may impact budgets. Yeah. But also, um, another quest, I mean, if Act 73 falls apart, then
That falls apart.
That falls apart.
Yes.
Yeah, that's my understanding. Yeah. Do you hear anything different? Let me know. It's, you know, we're, yeah, there's, there's still, uh, some, there's some, um, things that aren't clear in that law. We're going on what we think is correct. Information on high school for, um, it's the core, core classes that were, are impacted, um, courses that are AP courses and, um, what was the word they used?
End of the line.
And they have a word for it. Those are not in the calculation, but anything that is in the graduation requirements, that's how we're, most people are interpreting. Um, they have to have 18 students in them. So for us and any school that participates in, um, sending kids to the tech center, we really have to map out, ensuring that we're offering the courses that kids need to graduate for all the kids that, um, are here and then gone to the tech center. So it's a, it's a bit of a scheduling puzzle that we're working through. All right, but um, okay. So financial report, I'll just go back to it. This is the breakdown. If you continue, it's by account detail. Um, I, I said, Larry, why is the, um, workers' compensation, uh, in the red? His response was, uh, there are more workers' complaints. So that was his explanation for that. But, um, overall, it's the first quarter and we're not really worried about, um, the finances at this point. But that's online. If you, if you want to look at it more closely and have questions, Larry's happy to answer them. The better verse than that. And I believe that is the last slide of my report. And I will leave it up to you, Davis. If you want, um, I can keep sharing. If you want Bridget to sharing of the grading. If there are questions, she has a little, little couple of slides to help answer questions if you have them on grading.
Uh, sure. Yeah. We got a couple of quick things to get through before that. But if you want to leave it up to me, I don't think we have anything that we need to share, um, for them. So, all right. Um, so we're going to move on to item six, which is our discussion, followed by mountain views if needed. Uh, and we're going to start with the decoupling of capital debt letter, uh, that we as a board have an option of signing on to. Um, I know that got, that's in the packet. So everybody should have had a chance to look at it by now, but functionally, what this is, this is, uh, kind of being spearheaded, I think, by Mountain View's folks. Uh, and this is about decoupling, yeah, decoupling capital debt from the education spending formula. Um, right now, uh, my understanding, if I'm correct and I'm wrong here, but is that, uh, particularly construction funds that are coming from those capital debt sources, um, are being considered part of per pupil spending. Some of our schools in situations like, you know, Hartford is and Woodstock, especially as right now, uh, that can make them run the risk of, uh, overshooting the, uh, the limit of per pupil spending, uh, if they didn't build one, which is hugely problematic, uh, the existing formula. Um, so they requested that we sign on to it. Um, Elizabeth gave us a dad to this.
Yeah, because I, one of the discussions has been, I don't know if it's between the redistricting task force, or I think it's probably redistricting task force, is the fact that, uh, there, there will have to be building associated with all of these new districts. And while the legislature acknowledged it, actually, school construction, the, the fact of school construction was actually the only thing that everybody agreed on, um, when they passed H454 into Act 73. So they, they are acutely aware of school construction and yet there is no funding for, there's no funding at all. They just so the ability of Woodstock and other districts in their same, uh, position, um, to be able to spend money on it, right? Even just having the ability to do it, um, is really critical.
Yeah. Based on this letter, I mean, it functionally in the current setup, it, it almost punishes local taxpayers if they do decide to pursue school construction. I think I'll just read a little bit of the set, middle of this, uh, letter. Uh, uh, as you know, this artificially, well, street's a little bit of a paragraph. It's not very long. So without immediate action by the legislature, the current school funding system requires any district that must, must borrow to repair, renovate, or rebuild facilities have its construction debt counted in its education spending allotment. As you know, this artificially inflates the district's per pupil spending, which in turn places schools in risk of hitting the excess spending threshold. If that threshold is crossed, taxpayers are penalized, paying $2 for every dollar over the limit. Needless to say, this discourages critical capital investment and forces districts with aging unsafe buildings into a possible position. Either neglect facilities further or burden taxpayers with punitive double taxation. So I think that's kind of the meat of it in that paragraph. So I, I would be in favor of us signing on to this.
I actually, yeah, I have no objections to signing on to this because I think tying construction to spending just discourages construction, which I think is the point of the legislation passing this.
Is that it? That was the point, was to discourage?
Discourage it. So
Yeah, until, I mean, they, they did it on purpose so that there would be no construction until the districts were settled, because they didn't think it would be fair to, for many different reasons, uh, for, um, construction to occur when they don't even know what districts there will be. It does. And yet we have Woodstock High School, which could be, you know, shuttered, condemned any day.
Wow.
That's the, that's the thing.
The time, the redistricting timeline is not reasonable. I think that's a consensus of all thinking people. And so because it's not reasonable, any immediate needs are ignored. Which is unfortunate.
So before we discuss this further, I realize you're just a little bit backwards. So I will take a motion for us to, uh, as a board, sign on to the, uh, the request, or the letter, request for special let, special session legislation to decouple capital debt from the education spending formula.
So.
Second.
Excellent. Any discussion?
I, while I, while I really appreciate the, um, letter, it's, we're not going to have a special session between now and, and January. It's just not going to happen. And I regret that. I mean, it's just not. And Phil Scott has been asked publicly about it. Um, and he has said, absolutely not. Um, but regardless of whether we should have a special session anyway, um, uh, I regret that that is part of the letter. I think that the, uh, you know, it would be really nice to have the letter, uh, urging the, the legislature to deal with it immediately. In January is like the first thing that they do so that they, you know, can um, get moving on it. But I regret that it asks for a special session.
That makes sense. At the same time, though, and I agree with Elizabeth, I feel amiss not to support an S U that we are hoping to work with, even though it's, it's charging at windmills.
Well, I guess part of the question, it, part of the question for me is that timing piece, like, so it, it is such a, it is such a complicated position to be in.
Yeah.
It's complicated for Woodstock and it's, it's also complicated for Woodstock's potential partners. But in principle, like at a very basic level, construction should not be part of the excess spending threshold, period. It shouldn't. It's not right.
No.
Yeah. Another part of this letter is that it, it points out that the state hasn't funded school capital construction since 2007.
Yeah.
So we're, we're coming up in 20 years.
Yep.
Um, which is what, just, just under half of the life lifespan of a school building.
Yeah.
So say, it's not surprising. We're seeing a lot of facilities around the state starting to hit that age where they desperately need improvement or replacement.
It's definitely one of the elephants in the room.
Yeah.
And, and in, in, in my opinion, like, the only way to, when you, when you create a new district of four to 8,000 students, the only way to actually show that there will be opportunities in that new district is to offer funding for a new, a brand new school. I don't think, you know, I just don't. Um, I don't think, you know, I just don't, and I could be wrong, but I don't think the opportunity of being in a class with more students is the same as creating new educational opportunities for um for students. And so, you know, my hope, my personal hope is that um there will be new skills, new schools built all over the state to kind of mark in the era in which uh we're going in on it.
And I I share that hope, Elizabeth. I think that that fundamentally speaks to the frustration that I think a lot of people have been having, I specifically have, which is just that hope would be expressed on a much longer and more reasonable timeline. And we're talking about
A hundred percent.
Systemic change that we're looking at and five years is in a ten or fifteen years might even be pushing it.
Yeah, I know.
But yeah, yeah, um, but it's worth saying.
It is worth trying. I was just going to say, it is worth.
It's worth saying over and over again. Um, so I, and I I hear what you're saying too about, I mean, the the feasibility of the special legislative session maybe not being the most realistic target for this. That being said, I think other than that, having this bring to attention that this is a really, really pressing concern.
Absolutely. And I, I don't, I'm not saying.
Yeah.
I I'm not saying that that we should not sign on to it as a result of that. I'm just saying, I think it's naive to think that, especially in October, that we're going to have a special, I mean, personally, I think we should have a special session because of other reasons. There are things that need to be addressed really urgently that we're not addressing, but that's not what this is about. And uh, and it's, it's just not going to happen. But again, to me fundamentally, uh, we should be getting things off of the um education spending, not adding things to it.
All right. Any further discussion? All right. If not, um, I will, I'll do a roll call vote for this one. So I'll start with our folks online. Uh, so Megan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Elizabeth?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. So the motion passed. We'll uh sign on to that one. All right. And I can, um, I can email Carrie, I guess, and have her add her name to that list. So I'll, I'll just make it. Do that after this meeting. On to our next item, which is the update on ABS ground status. I think that that was covered. Yeah, that was covered in our administrative report. So we can skip that and get to high school rating questions. It's pretty good for me tonight, just to show us a couple more slides and address any more questions we might have. I'll ask maybe.
Yeah. So you want to pull the slides? I think um this, some of this was an overview done, I think, before the SU during May. Um, and I just want to kind of go back over the structure and then obviously address any questions um that arise from that. So our move was, as we've talked about for many, many years, is to truly have a proficiency-based grading system. I think in many ways Hartford um jumped on this earlier, perhaps got through a lot more pre-COVID. We got sidetracked with COVID, there's no doubt, and talked about power standards and just never got to the sort of point. In the meantime, Vermont's had teachers all over the state meet over the past few years and develop what are known, as you look at the bullets up there, uh, critical proficiencies, which, you know, these are sort of uh name switching in many ways look very much like power standards broad and proficiencies that we think are important. And these are defined more carefully by the priority performance indicators. You were sent by Christine of of layout, which I'll show you on the next, next screen, as to how these two flow into each other. And the final, and I think most important thing is these indicators are great, but they have to be measured by something. And so for every performance indicator, there is a proficiency scale that goes with it. Um, so if you turn, if you, if we click to the next picture, if you're a parent or a student, your, your front page actually looks not much different than last, last year. At the very top is what the front page is. So for all of your classes in this example, I've only clipped out English nine. This child in English nine has a three. Um, you know, for a lot of, a lot of parents and even some kids, you know, who are in the classes, that's their, what we call our quick look, right? Um, what, what teachers at a deeper level and the assignments reflect is if you double click on that grade, you'll see potentially what's down below. And what's down below are the assignments themselves and the uh, performance indicators, uh, priority performance indicators, what we call the PPIs, that um are in that project and are graded on the proficiency scale. So uh, production, and we'll see this in a moment in the diagrams that were shared with you, conventions for the written verbal response, production writing process, and then and on through. So those are where those kind of um, the three comes from, what's behind the three. And again, depending on who you are and who the audience is, sometimes the three is what they see and sometimes, um, you know, kids certainly have to click down because they're the ones who are getting these pieces back. Um, some of those pieces will end up being what we call the portfolio pieces and some will be uh just other classroom pieces along the way. Um, there's obviously a lot of formative work that goes on in the classroom that is, you know, more non-graded. Um, these are usually what I call smaller summatives, little important building blocks along the way. Um, so um, teachers have been, um, teachers and departments agreed on what we call weighted summatives. So what that really means is that pieces that are big, such as the final essay, um, uh, those pieces are absolutely weighted more. Um, they're at the proficiency tasks themselves that will become part of the student portfolio are weighted more. Um, but that doesn't mean some of the smaller pieces don't have weight. It's just not weighted as much. Uh, but they're still all um graded on the scales based on the performance indicators. So that's just an overview and any questions, I'll get to them in a second. So if you click to the next thing, it'll help you understand that diagrams that were sent to you, how this flows. So at the very top was Vermont's statement, put together with all, uh, you know, expert department people across the state of basically what does a graduate look like in this area, PLA, um, what we call, you know, the graduation requirement. So proficiency-based graduation requirements. Um, below that are are known as the critical proficiencies. And I I do want to say that the indicators that are below that, that are defined those proficiencies, remember are minimum standards for our graduates. So it's not everything that a classroom does. Certainly, it's not everything that calculus does. And in fact, if you go to the math ones, you will see there's no calculus on there at all because remember, these are graduation requirements for all of our students, not what um, students that are taking more and more advanced courses have to know. We do have those indicators, but they will not appear on this document. These are graduation requirement documents. So from the performance uh indicators, you can see, I pulled those out. Um, you can start to see how, um, for example, the critical proficiency leads to conventions that was seen on an earlier slide from the English classroom. Um, and you can also see another one there, production. If you go to the last slide, you know, it's hot back, these are the scales. So when you see something like on this one, you're looking at production, it defines very clearly what a three means, right, for a student. I can statements, very similar to what Hartford has. I can boom, 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 boom. These are what are considered a three. Obviously, children are leading up to that um for our graduation um, for our graduation requirements. Um, students that are in advanced classes, teachers will add to this, right? You might have to compare and contrast up two pieces of authors, you know, works. Uh, you might have to analyze historical time period with which something was written. So teachers add on to this part. I'm I'm going to emphasize again, these are our graduation requirements for all of our students. So the I can statements really reflect when our graduates walk out in here, whoever that happens to be. Um, this is what is expected to be shown in uh pieces of work in their portfolio. Um, so that's kind of the background as to where our grading system is in terms of um, in terms of and how it relates to Vermont. Just as a note, a couple, we were, we gave the teachers these Vermont ones. Vermont came down, the year we came down, worked with our teachers last year at the high school level. And teachers did have room to remove, which was rare, keep exactly the same or add a few. I would say most of the adding came a technology standard in science, and I think I showed this with you, a physics standard in science um indicator, and also a couple in math, especially around geometry, which I had shared with AMV was very thin. Uh, so a couple were added in geometry. Um, so other than that, in terms of uh the documents, um, nothing. ELA, one frankly was very good. It's hard to find room in that. Most of the teachers accepted all of them. In the case of classes like technology, they did not have one done. So we created one based on the ISCE standards, and which is really nice because ISCE standards, which are tech standards in the nation, already have proficiency scales. So there was some of our own homework that had to be done around that. Um, but for the most part, most classes, they are already in place. The middle school ones are already done. And so are the proficiency scales in light elementary also. But right now, um, our middle school only at Weathersfield in the specials um are grading using the new PPIs, but that is, the plan is that's a next year thing. So.
So what's the plan for stats, velvet round? You know, because this is a really good starting point, but when you, the, the, when the tire gets the road or the rubber gets the road, you have to begin to create benchmarks, you know, what does uh conventions look like? So then you can start to build reliability and in validity for the assessment phases.
Absolutely agree. So, so um, thinking about where we're at right now in the process, um, teachers last year began to develop at high school level proficiency task. And so they had to look at those against the proficiency scales and make sure the task is meeting what we're, we're trying to get at. Um, pieces, obviously this year, need to be collected. And what I like, which you're kind of describing, is what I call the calibration. That's bringing pieces to the table and really analyzing those pieces, which could be benchmark pieces and saying, this is what a three looks like. That's, that's work that Vermont used to require of our teachers back in the day. And I absolutely thought it was really, really important, like, is the three of a response to literature uh piece according to what Tracy thinks the same as what I think? And putting that on the table, really analyzing why we each think that's a three. We actually had to be calibrated back in the day from the state of Vermont.
Eighty-six percent.
Right. So I agree very much that that work is so important. Yeah.
And just to make your understanding, so we're, we're going about the work as we approach establishing reliability, validity around the stuff of creating exemplars internally that we can use to inform what those standards are within our.
Yes, and and to the degree, remember, we've been, we've been standard space. And really, when it came down to it, just by the natural process, we've, we've been thinking about power standards for a long time. And a lot of these reflect, a lot of the indicators reflect exactly the priority that's been years for some of these. So if you walked into Mr. Beatty's room, you would see pieces that he has with the science department calibrated and decided where, where is this at? So some of the indicators language, remember, were built from the NGSS standards. You know, put together two or three. It isn't like it came from brand new, but it's just saying, these are the priority for graduation.
Yeah.
Um, so it's, it's new in a sense to our teachers, but frankly, our teachers' understanding years now of what we call power standards and what should be our priority was not that far off from what the work is that they had to do. So, but I think that Phil's point, and I think it's the best thing to do, is collecting those pieces and having conversations about them. So, yeah.
And it really becomes a learning process, right? How to teach.
Yeah.
And this is really important. So now how do you teach that?
Yeah.
And then is that communication between teachers. Teachers say, hey, this is what I have. This is how I do it. And so when I assess this piece, that analyzing of saying, well, why did I score it so two and you scored it a three? Uh, those conversations begin to build the teacher's understanding of what the standard is. And when that happens, it builds an understanding of what are your expectations of the student? And then they can communicate that expectation to the student and the students begin to understand.
It might become clear in your point that looking at a piece that students just don't really understand the deeper meaning of slope, something as simple as that, right? Rate of change or whatever. And so it does import instruction. You know, this is an area we're just not emphasizing enough and getting away from star data, right? This is really the at-home data, which is sometimes a much more learning experience. So, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, please, if you have questions, come up down the road. Don't hesitate. Give me an email. I really appreciate you, you explaining this. This is, this is really helpful in the thinking answer.
Absolutely. So, any other questions for the vote?
Oh, just a quick comment. If I find it very amusing in this list that they have the physical education standards in here finished. Um, as opposed to some of the others that they still need to do. And it points to uh who has power at the AOE.
And well, thank you, Bridget, for sharing some topics tonight and helping you explain that a little more. All right, uh, item D, we need to check in. The perennial item, quick one now. It looks like just about everybody has signed up. Uh, thanks for jumping on and doing that. I think we're in pretty good shape. Um, I would just say if you have not jumped on and signed up yet, uh, please do. Um, and if, you know, for some reason you're not able to make it, just let me know and we can uh figure it out. But uh, yeah, we dinner is November sixth, though we got about a month exactly to figure that out, but we are well on our way. And the only note that I will have is that uh, because we do have, we are signed up for another one closer to when we did the last one, which I think is in February. I can double check that. Uh, my thought on that, just to get in your heads now, is I'm totally cool just repeating exactly what we did in February. I just wanted to make sure this one was a little different. So we didn't just have a complete standby, but I thought
Why not?
I thought that one worked really well. We don't agree with it a little every time. Just, just once. All right. Any other thoughts, questions about that? Or are we all, we all good?
Um, I said I would bring some um tea along.
Yes.
How much? Do you think?
Fifty gallons.
Okay.
I think a couple of the, you know,
Yeah, the bigger ones.
The bigger ones is usually good. And then, you know, if we can't use them, they'll, um, you know, Mary's really good at telling us whether they want to keep some there or whether they want to set this up with some, depending on what's.
Because there was a lot of drink, drinks left over. Oh, it was, okay.
You know what we can do, Nancy, is it might be, we can probably check with Mary before and just get her assessment on what they have there already.
Okay.
And that way, if they're already overloaded. So I think last time we brought some, we just, they didn't do them. So.
When do you want the menu stuff to be finalized?
Um, that's a good question. And, you know, I love a deadline. Um, let's say, look at this, because it's easier. Um, I, I, let's say by like a week out, I think that's fair. Um, and really, I think most of it's there already. Uh, yeah, so if we can get it by, by, uh, you know, Thursday, October thirtieth, you know, let's say end of October, since it's the following Thursday in November, that'd be good.
Yeah, I tend to look at my menu based upon what's, what's on sale. Yeah, and it was easy to cook and easy. So I do a meal at cousin's dinner that is quite popular, but I, I do uh chicken thighs and uh but I, I do chicken thighs and pork roast. And so it's easy to cut, easy to serve, and it has that variety. Usually it gets barbecue.
Sounds delicious.
Right. Yeah, looking forward to it. It's a lot of fun at these community dinners and.
And Danielle had a great time.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. The fun time we get there.
He won. It's a lot of fun.
Yeah, he and Hannah were stars in the show there. All right.
I forgot. Yeah.
Yeah.
Both of them together. Yeah, it was pretty great.
All right. Well, we can keep, you know, again, this is planning stuff or this is coordination stuff around us. So we can, we can do this offline, but everyone, most folks have dropped something in. If you need me to recently link to you, just ask and I'll, I'll send it your way. But cool. All right. And moving on to N E, we do have a resignation to consider?
Yeah. Did we share the letter with you?
I'm not sure how much I should read in public. She shared it with the board, I think. She shared it.
You shared it with Davis.
I shared it with Davis.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So the music teacher that we have currently, this one day a week, needs to step down due to um, situation. She's, I can read the letter if that's helpful. Do you want me to read the letter?
No, I don't think.
Okay.
No, it's not.
It's not a good idea. It's everyone else's.
So, yeah, I mean, it talks about personal reasons. I mean, things happen in life. And we couldn't get it. So we're looking to try and get somebody in at this point. It's a point four position. She's still uncovering point two of it anyway. So now we can open it up to a four. Although I love teaching music, it's twelve friends a week that are addition to my own work. So I'm happy to share that with somebody and give a focus for our students.
All right. So I will take a motion to approve the resignation of Sarah Carlisle.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I wish her the best of luck.
Yes. Yep.
Not me.
Megan, are you trying to say something?
No, sorry.
That's okay. All right.
Somebody.
Just making sure. Yeah, no, I echo that, Bill. I wish her the best of luck. I know it's, it's not an ideal circumstance. I appreciate, you know, the time that she has put in already while she's been part of the school community.
Yeah, she said she's trying, going to try and help for just to get to her and find somebody as best she can. And I think between the two of us, we're going to make sure our kids get some of the music education.
We truly appreciate on both of your parts, and I'm glad we can open this position up now as we need to. All right. Well, pending, uh, so I, there's no further discussion. I will take a roll call vote to approve the resignation of Sarah Carlisle, starting online. Megan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Elizabeth?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. So the resignation is approved. And again, best of luck to Sarah.
Thank you.
All right. We are on to seven, which is setting our next agenda for Monday, November 3rd. It's probably a good time to do a final community dinner check-in since it's within a couple days of that. So if there's any loose ends by then, we should tie them up. But like I said, we're in good shape on that already. And I appreciate, you know, so many folks jumping in there.
We're going to have the student growth report.
Great.
Data.
Awesome.
And also, we're going to include some behavior data with that.
Good. Yeah. We're probably far enough into the year that we can start to, start to get a look at that. Excellent.
Would, would you mind sending in in advance on the meeting?
Yep. You're going to get it October, publish it. Like, if some, some time during mid-October.
Thank you.
Uh, do we need to look at forming a local budget committee as the next meeting?
Um, we could put that on, I have it on the principal agenda for tomorrow, actually, to
Excellent.
Put something out to the community. So yeah, I'll put the, the AC.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Yep.
Next agenda.
Yeah. Anything else on the?
I'm just thinking if Larry might have some. We should probably have a preliminary budget conversation. You may not have numbers, but we should start talking about that. So.
Yeah, I think that's what I figured is have a little conversation about kind of what we're looking at, you know, early days. And then I think just getting a word out to the, to the community about taking part, kind of, as something that we did last year.
Next. Next year's the last year of the teacher conference, right?
Yes. So we have to make, we have one year off now. This, this year. Yes. Yeah. So we have those numbers. Hey, the good news is that in a new district, and that's like, what, 2027? So you won't have to worry about it anymore.
That's, that's not something I'm going to miss.
Or maybe you will.
Bye. The last, the last round was rough.
Yeah.
It was a little rough, but.
Twenty-seven. No, I think we're going to have to negotiate next year. That, it will be in the, like, the new district will, will be all leveling up.
Yeah, right. Yep.
So cross that one we get to. Be interested to see.
Yep.
All right. Anything else for next agenda? Or we, we can bring what we got. If anything comes up, we'll, we can give you an email.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, N E, executive session? No, I don't think we need any of that. All right. Well, that brings us to nine, which is adjournment. So all those in favor of adjourning this meeting of the Madison School District Board, please let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Nobody opposed their stand while I am adjourning this duty of the Madison School District Board at eight oh seven PM. And thank you all for being here.